Alderman Wynn.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Tindham.
Here.
Alderman Grover.
Here.
Aldi- and Rainey is, it's eight to zero, Madam Mayor.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, January 10th, meeting of the Evanston City Council. The first item is mayor's public announcements. I would like to ask for a moment of silence to honor Congresswoman Gabrielle Gifford and all twenty victims, including the six who died in the shooting. Thank you. I have two announcements. One is that the vendor problems will be corrected that bothered some people who were trying to buy city stickers. And we are working with the vendor to make that go more smoothly. And I hope that next year, people will come earlier to buy their city stickers. And the last announcement is that I did write a letter to State Senator Schoenberg and to Representative Gable. And I did say that I, not the city council, supported the income tax increase, not the entire income tax increase that's currently proposed, nor the tax on businesses. But I did it because if the state is to get out of the hole that it's currently in, either they will cut money coming to cities, or they will increase the income tax. And I think the income tax is more progressive. And the increasing the property tax, which is what we would have to do, would be regressive. So in the midst of all this fury over the state's proposals, I did support an increase in the income tax, but not in the tax on businesses, which I very much hope they do not enact. I have one proclamation. It is the North End Mothers Club's 100th anniversary, and congratulations to them. And the proclamation will be delivered to them tomorrow. And city manager, do you have announcements?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Good evening. Several items. First, one that's not on your agenda, Nancy Radzovich, our economic development manager, is here to report some good news.
Good evening. It's my first time up here, and I've got a little bit of a cold, so I apologize.
I have Kleenex.
I brought some with me as well. We're really pleased to announce, we got an email today, and we're pleased to announce that Converge Communications Systems, which is an Evanston-based business telecommunications firm that's currently located at 2930 Central Street, just announced today that they plan to expand within the city of Evanston. And they're going to open a second office right down the street at 1732 Central Street. Converge Communications Systems was founded in 2003 by some Evanston residents. And they're a single-source provider of leading-edge telecommunications solutions and support services for businesses. The city was able to help Converge Communications Systems sort through some issues on some past permits on the site that they wanted to buy. And we were really pleased when we got the email today to find out that the data that we had found had helped them sort through some of these issues and that they had closed down their properties. So in his email to the city staff and to the officials, he had acknowledged that he wanted to thank the city staff for helping him through the process. And also wanted to thank the city for, quote-unquote, "overall making, overall just making us believe that Evanston is a city that appreciates small businesses." He also said that he's looking forward to hopefully expanding some more at the same rate in the next eight years. And we are really hoping that we will continue to work with him as he expands and stay in Evanston. So that's our announcement.
Northwestern University was also helpful, and I'd like to thank them for their help in that. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I think Nancy understates that when she says staff was involved, I think it probably wouldn't have happened without Northwestern's help on the parking issue. And Nancy Radzovich, Steve Griffin, who jumped in, I think they'd been here barely two weeks when we got word that Converge Communications was considering a second location, either in Evanston or in Skokie. And thank you to Alderman Tindham for coming to that initial meeting. And to the people at Converged, Steve Malkior, Kevin Rubin, Thomas Hempel, I think, all of whom are Evanston residents. So it was quite a coup, I think, to keep them here and help them grow here. So thank you, Ms. Radzovich, for all your work on this. And to Johanna Niden, I think, who took the first call.
Yeah, I guess along those lines, I also want to throw out the thank yous to Jeff Murphy and representatives at the fire department, because, again, there was a lot of research involved, and it was really a team effort. So, great.
Thank you very much.
Takes a village to do economic development. So thank you to the aldermen who made the initial connection, and certainly, as other members of the community, aldermen, non-aldermen, here of businesses that are here and would like to expand, give us a call. We have a team in place, and we'll make it happen. So again, thank you, Nancy and your team. Next, I'd like to talk a little bit about a new city website we're unveiling this evening, and that is a city transparency website. And Brandon's going to bring that up. This is something that we've been working on, on and off, for the last several months. As you know, Erica Storley, our web developer, went off on maternity leave just before the holidays. And we pretty much had it done prior to her departure. But with the budget and the holidays, we wanted to wait until after the first of the year to actually make this public. We felt that we really didn't do a good enough job putting all of the, again, transparency being somewhat of a catch-all phrase, but ways that we do business, how we spend our money, all really in one place. And so what we've done with this new website is put all those things in one place. And Brandon, if you could just help me walk through the various components. The first part is an easy link to all of our outstanding bids and proposals. And if you click that next link, Brandon, this is information that we have previously had online, but we've added a link to it at this location as well. So if people are interested in bidding on projects, they can find all of the electronic information there. Go back, actually, go back twice. And we need to probably make sure in the future there's a link back to take you back there. But the second item is the bills list. We have not had that as a separate standalone area of the website that people could look at over an extended period of time. As you know, we now have added credit card transactions. So not only will the bills list be available on this part of the site, but so will the credit card transactions for people to review. Next is the budget and CAFR information. And this takes you to the city's budget website and shows that. Let's go back to the other page. Contracts, again, this is a part of a module that we use for the bids and proposals. And so the contract tracking database, if you want to see who we have contracts with, who the contacts are, how much they cost, when they were issued, all that information is centrally located there. And you can dive into it further if people are interested in doing that. Let's go back one place. Department reports. We have several departments that do annual reports. And so we have added those. We'll be working with each of the remaining departments to see if it makes sense for them to have annual reports, and if so, we'll place them there. I've also asked Joe McCray and members of his staff to begin working on a citywide annual report, because I think it's important that we report information to the community on an annual basis. With the advent of 3-1-1, we'll be able to do that, I think. I have a little bit more detailed information. So that's something we're hoping to put together, some sort of report on an interim basis for the end of the year 2010, and then hopefully, as we move forward in 2011. Next is executive session minutes. Again, sometimes not the easiest thing to find. The law department is much more diligent now in actually making those minutes available. As I think the council is aware, but the community may not be aware, there is a review period where those minutes are not made available. And then after that period, we review them every six months. And the law department now has a schedule to review minutes as they become available. And as they are available, we'll be posting them on this website. The next link is for FOIA requests. We're not at the point yet of some larger communities being able to post our FOIA requests, but we want to make sure that people have an easy place to go to. There's other places on the website, but we also wanted to put a link back to the city clerk's page for FOIA requests. Next is pensions. This is a review of some pension information. The video of Joshua Rouse's presentation back to the council in September is on there. The Blue Ribbon Report of the Police and Fire Pension Funds from 2008 is there. And then the annual actuarial evaluations. Next is salaries. We show salary information a couple different ways. Because if you just show a person and how much they make, that's interesting. But if you don't know what they do, it makes it a little bit harder to suss through. So what we've done is we've added our current pay plans per each of our various bargaining units and our exempt units. Brandon, if you could go down the page. We have issues for non-union employees. We have the city manager's contract. So if anybody is really having trouble sleeping, and they want to read the fine details of my employment agreement, why don't you click on that, Brandon? It is a PDF of that document. So if you want to see where I get my money and all the detail, you can find it there. Then we have the union contracts, AFSCME, Teamsters, Fraternal or Police, and the firefighters, AFSCME above that. Then as we go down the list, we also have a complete detailing of all of our employee benefits. Go down through that. And then if you go back to one more page, I think there's one last page. Then tax information. People want to know where their taxes come from, property taxes. So we've made available some broad areas there. So we hope that this is a good start. I think there's still things that can be done. If you go all the way back to the very first page, thank you, Brandon, we have a place for people to fill in, recommended items for inclusion on the transparency websites. They can put their name and their email address. And I bet you, if you go down, Brandon, there's a comment box, and people can fill that in. So again, it's been something a while in the making. What we've tried to do is take best practices from other jurisdictions around the country. I think we've captured most of the areas that other communities use that are doing this. So we hope that that's useful for members of the community. Next, unless there's any questions. Next, we have announcements pertaining to the Martin Luther King holiday. First, a rundown of the ceremonies and events for the holiday. Bob Dornaker, the recreation superintendent, is here with that.
Thank you, and good evening. The annual Martin Luther King Junior birthday celebration will take place at 1:00 on Saturday, January 15th, at Fleetwood Jordan Community Center, 1655 Foster Street. There will be reflections on King's life and musical selections by Christ Temple Choir and Soul For Real, and mission is free. Additionally, citizens are invited to join others in the community by making a personal pledge for peace on Monday, January 17th. The group, A Community of One, is an interfaith group in Evanston, which is dedicated to living out Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Junior's dream of a beloved community. The various bodies of faith are calling upon each individual to make a personal pledge of peace through service for 2011. And the city of Evanston, volunteer Evanston, YOU, and the diverse faith communities representing a community of one are also promoting a community-wide event for Martin Luther King Day. Activities include a community coffee, a service fair, a peace march, a program sponsored by YOU, an MLK interface panel discussion, and a candlelight vigil. Citizens are encouraged to bring one non-perishable item to any of the events. Collection bins will be available at all locations. Beyond the planning for Martin Luther King Day events, the ultimate goal of A Community of One is to be a catalyst for the acts of peace via linking non-for-profit organizations, including the city of Evanston, with people in the community who are willing to volunteer their time to serve others and to create a similar movement among the people of Evanston to provide peace and support to one another. Complete details of all events are posted on the City of Evanston News and Calendar section at www.cityofevanston.org. Residents without internet access may also call 847-448-8266 for more information. Thank you.
Thank you.
And lastly, with the holiday comes a day where city offices will be closed. However, that still means we still have to pick the trash up at some point. And Suzette Robinson, our Public Works Director, is here to fill in the details there.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, city manager. As a result of the Martin Luther King holiday, regular recycling and residential refuge will be collected one day later. For example, residents with a regularly scheduled pickup on Monday will be picked up on Tuesday, et cetera. So the collection will occur Tuesday through Friday, as opposed to Monday through Thursday. Commercial and condominium collections will not be changed. So if you're in a condominium, the contractor will be working on Monday. So if you have a Monday collection, you will still be collected on Monday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that concludes my announcements.
Thank you. City clerk, do you have communications?
No communications, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Next is Special Order of Business Capital Improvement Program.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. We're here this evening to continue the discussion on the 2011 Capital Improvement Program. We have talked about the non-general obligation bond portion of the program previously, but this evening, our intent is to focus more on that. Next slide, please. So we'll give you a recap of the CIP process to date, a summary of carryover projects that we are proposing moving forward into the next fiscal year, those projects that are not completed, an update regarding our current debt position as it pertains to our general obligation debt for capital projects, a projection of our debt position over the next several years, a review of Priority One projects, a summary of Priority Two projects. Then we'll wrap it up with questions. We have a lot of general obligation debt. And one of my concerns as putting this budget together, as I've looked with how the budgets have been done in previous years, is that while we didn't do quite zero-based budgeting, we went back to the departments, and my direction to them is assume that you have no money for general obligation projects. And from that look at what you believe are the absolute most important projects that you need to protect assets, and things that we need to do that would keep people safe and healthy within the city of Evanston. And I commend all of the departments for going back and doing that. Because what you will hear this evening is we have over $100 million in general obligation debt. And even if we were to not do another capital project, we are going to be paying millions of dollars of debt service on that $100 million as we go forward over the next 15 years. And then you'll see projections to that regard. While I think it's unrealistic to say that we're going to do zero, I'm not satisfied that even the list of projects that we have identified as your staff as Priority One are all the projects that ultimately should be approved, that there can be additional reductions on those Priority One projects. We've also included for your information what we consider Priority Two projects. Again, I think under different circumstances, and if money were no object, we would ask the council to move forward with both Priority One and Priority Two in the best interest of the community to make the necessary investments that we do. Up on the screen is a list of projects. Some of them are multiple projects, but to fall into one area that are a particular concern to me, that I wanted to raise with the council before we get into the details of the specific projects. First is the Xcela software, and you'll hear more of the specifics on that from Mr. Lyons and Mrs. Earl. This city council has been asked to spend millions upon millions of dollars on software for various systems over probably the last 10 or 15 years. What we're finding out is that perhaps that software that we have purchased is not necessarily serving the needs that we need them to serve. And we are going back through that and coming to you with options to move forward in a different direction. And the Xcela software is just one of multiple pieces of software that will be doing that. We are going to have to do this. We do not have the functionality that we need. But we're also trying to do it smart. And we're moving away, I think, as other municipalities, other agencies are moving away, from software that was almost custom-made for us. And this could be finance software, this could be permit-tracking software. And the world is just different. And we're able to look at software that is much more generic and is much more flexible that not only meets our needs, but is also meeting the needs of other jurisdictions around the country. So you're going to see us be asking for more money for software. We think we have good explanations for Xcela. We think we have good explanations for other software that'll be coming through. But it's still a lot of money. And it's something that we ask the council to listen to us carefully and make sure that you agree that we're on the right track. Another area is civic center renovation. As you know, we've made a great progress with probably the largest project, and that is the completion of the roof. There is still a lot of work that can be done, just things you can see and things you cannot see in the civic center. We're proposing as a Priority One project about $450,000 for improvements. We could do $100,000. We could do, excuse me, $2 million. We think the $450,000 number is an appropriate number to look at, but it is not a number that is in stone. And we look to the council as we talk further about civic center renovations to give us your feedback as to what you think is appropriate as we move forward with the civic center. The next is the Noyes Cultural Arts Center, and there's a couple different projects associated with that. This project and a couple of others, I think, also beg the question of future uses of some of our facilities. And the Noyes Cultural Arts Center is one of them. I think it serves a tremendous purpose in the community. It houses some very valuable organizations. But what is the future of the Noyes Cultural Arts Center? Is this something we want to continue doing as a city in the long term? Is this building, the building we wish to continue to use in the long term from a programmatic standpoint, from a structural standpoint? Those are questions that, my understanding, that staff has not aggressively asked, and the council has not discussed in great detail in recent years, and would ask that before we go down the road of investing significant dollars in the Noyes Cultural Arts Center, that the council feel comfortable, from a programmatic standpoint, where we're heading with that facility. Next is the animal shelter on Oakton. The council has informally discussed over the last several months, perhaps, other uses for the property that the animal shelter is on. As the council knows, we also have a recycling center nearby there. It's adjacent to an existing city park. It's also adjacent to a large parcel of land, 2424 Oakton, that has been available for development. Before we go down the road of investing additional dollars in a previously discussed project to renovate the animal shelter at that location, I think it's appropriate for the council to say, again, is this the facility and the location that we see the animal shelter staying over an extended period of time? Next is the Ecology Center Greenhouse. This is a facility that is in disrepair, that we believe, again, if we're going to continue, the programmatic elements of the greenhouse needs to be renovated. The city has applied for a grant that will help with that. It is not certain what our chances are with that grant. And what should we do? Is this something that is so important to the programmatic work of our city and the Ecology Center that we move forward? Or is it something we wish to pause? And if we do need to pause, might that be that the greenhouse is no longer available for use? And it would be something that we would put aside until there's funding to move forward with renovation? Next is the Fog and Signal House renovations adjacent to the lighthouse. Again, this is a building that faces significant challenges, and the costs associated with renovations are significant. What is the future program for not only this facility, but other facilities adjacent to the lighthouse? And where does that fit in the city's overall priorities? Next is maintenance on the service center, right down the street, which houses our forestry, streets and sanitation, and fleet operations. The building is not all that old, but it's reaching a point where there is renovation issues that we think are important to talk about. While I don't believe the facility is moving anywhere, I don't believe that the council has had any broad discussion about the current uses of the civic center and their needs. And so, again, before we invest significant dollars at the service center, I think it's appropriate for the council to have those discussions. And then finally, on this list of Priority One projects, our street resurfacing. I clearly believe we could spend twice or three times the amount of general fund money for local streets on street resurfacing. I think we do a good job of addressing, you know, major streets in the city of Evanston, but there are lots of smaller-site streets that really could use attention. And are we spending the amount of money we want to be spending on those streets for resurfacing? In most cases, some would be reconstruction, but most are resurfacing. And where does that fit in the overall scheme of the capital program? There are a couple of projects that aren't even on the Priority One list, which certainly require the council's policy attention. Probably first among those is the salt dome. This council, since it's been seated in the spring of '09, has not discussed, well, I got to take that back. I think it was one of the first things that came up was a discussion of the location of a salt dome. Should it remain its existing site at the service center? Should it move to a different site? And that's an unresolved issue. And before any additional money would be invested in the salt dome, I think it's appropriate for the council to have a policy discussion as to the location of the salt dome. So those are a number of sort of bigger-picture policy questions that I think are really essential to the projects that you're going to hear Mr. Lyons and Mrs. Earl now walk you through. I wish we had the money to do all the things that we should do. But my recommendation to the council is that the debt that we're facing with capital projects is so significant, we certainly can't do business as usual. And I think that it would certainly be helpful to me and your staff to have as much dialogue as possible from the council to set priorities so that whatever that final general fund number is, general obligation bond number is for capital projects, it be as small as possible in order to help us maybe make a small dent in the large debt service that we're facing. So with those introductory comments, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, Joelle and Earl, our Director of Administrative Services, is here, and we'll continue with the next part of the presentation.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, manager Bob Quitz. Happy New Year. As the manager said, I'm going to go over a little bit about where we are to date, the debt position of the city, along with Mr. Lyons, the treasurer. I'm going to talk in detail about the Priority One projects, the carryover projects in a little bit of detail, and then the Priority Two projects. So to date, as you recall, on November 15th, we gave you three big spreadsheets in different colors. The current year's projects, which you approved, were approved in June of 2010. So the first piece of information we gave you was the status of those projects. And when I get to the carryover portion of the presentation, you'll see that there's quite a few projects that are being carried over, and the recommendation is that we continue with those. And a lot of the reason goes to the fact that we did get a late start. We missed part of the construction season. So that's why that number is significant. We did also talk about the non-general obligation projects, which you approved during the budget process. And then we asked that you hold on to the general obligation projects for future discussion, which is what we're going to do this evening. To date, you've approved about $20 million in projects. Of that, we carried over some money, and we funded new projects. So you can see that through the Community Development Block Grant, the TIFs, and the water, there were some carryover figures. And then the new projects that you authorized were about $16 million. We talk about non-general obligation projects for the total of $20 million, but we need to keep in mind that to keep in mind that we may have to borrow for these projects, but all of the funding for the projects are non-tax dollars, meaning they're coming from other sources. I'm not going to go into detail about the carryover projects because we did give you a memo about that. A couple of things just in general. Unless you have specific questions, all of the directors are here. They can talk specifically to the projects on this slide and the next one. But there are a few things I wanted to mention. There's a few projects that you'll see that are bolded, and the reason for that is the funding for those projects comes from general obligation debt as well as other sources. The animal shelter, you can see up there, part of that is through a private donation. And then there's other projects on the next slide that have funding through grants. Again, the reason why the number is so high, and I'll go to the next slide, of $3.4 million is largely due to the construction season and the fact that these projects were approved in June of 2010. In addition to that, three of the projects on this list, you can see highlighted there, are reimbursements to the Illinois Department of Transportation. So these projects have a cash requirement, cash match, through the Department of Transportation, and the figures that are listed there is money that's owed, and we have not received the bills yet. We did give you a memo with just a brief update of these projects and their anticipated completion. And I know Alderman John Baptiste, last time we spoke, you said you wanted to possibly talk about some of the carryover projects. And as I said, if you have any specific questions about these projects or the ones on the prior slide, I may be able to answer them, or some of the directors can answer them. As far as our current debt position is concerned, you recall that we talked a little bit about this last year, and we came up with a list of communities that we wanted to compare Evanston to. We looked at population, and we also looked at whether or not they had a water facility. So this was the list of communities that we compared to last year. And you may recall that we pulled out a few indicators that we recommended that we use to have a meaningful comparison. We looked at total debt to EAV ratio, GEO debt to EAV ratio, GEO debt to per capita income, and per capita income, or per capita GEO debt as a percentage of per capita income. In September, the figures that you're looking at right now is what we presented to you. And you can see that Evanston was above the average in every area. Moving forward to today, we've made some modifications. One thing I can tell you is that there's two communities that are on a calendar year, fiscal year, so we don't have their latest data. I believe it was Displanes and Aurora. But the rest of them, we have updated, and we've used the same population figures and the same per capita income figures to make sure that we were doing the best comparison possible. Evanston's numbers have reduced a little bit, and we are going in the right direction. The reason for that is that about $20 million in our GEO debt has come off, and that was specifically related to the parking garages. We talked about some indicators, and those three indicators we have are the net per capita debt should remain under $900 per person. And on the prior slide, you can see that right now we're at about 1,900. And I do have September and January listed there for you for reference. Or under 5% of debt per capita as a percentage of per capita income. One thing I want to point out with those two indicators is that you can see the numbers in parentheses. We've gone from $174 million in GEO debt to 151 million. That is the gross GEO debt. The net GEO debt right now is about 101 million. So if we do some more math, those numbers that are up there will come down a little bit, but at least as far as the $900 figure, we're still above that. So again, we were trying to use the same indicators, the same comparisons we gave you in September, and this is how the indicators have been updated.
Alderman Burris has a question.
Yeah, I just want to go back to something you said just a moment ago about the parking deck debt of 20 million. And could you explain a little bit more about that? I can't remember. We've been off for three weeks and can't remember everything.
I'm going to defer to Mr. Lyons for the detail.
Good evening, members of council, Madam Mayor, Mr. City Manager. If you may recall, when we did the parking debt and a lot of the projects in the '90s and in the early 2000s, we used some variable rate debt. And we were, with that variable rate debt, we also had some balloon payments in there. So one of the, I know that one of the, I don't know if I'd say it dicey, but one of the concerning moments for us on one of our major payments in December 2008, not 2009, was we had one of our large variable debt payments that came due right when the market was crashing. And it all worked out. We paid our debt out. And then this last year, in December '09, we also had a very large payment that was scheduled, and it was scheduled to coincide with the closing of the downtown TIF. So you had a $9 million and a $9.5 million tax increment coming in for those last few years of the downtown TIF, and the balloon payments were set to coincide with the TIF closing at that point in time. Unfortunately, you know, that's good news. We don't have any of those really in our future, where we have any big chunks where we'll be saying, we have another 20 million we're going to take off in year five from now. So that was a one-time event. Most of our debt, as we'll show later, is fairly level, a fairly level debt service.
Great, thanks.
I hope that answers.
I can't remember.
And then the final indicator you can see has also reduced slightly, again, related to the large amount of debt that has come off the schedule, and it is the net debt as a percentage of market value of taxable property. And our recommendation is that it should not exceed 3%. Now I'll turn it over to Mr. Lyons for the projection on the debt position.
As the slide we're currently looking at shows, we're projecting to retire 7.3 million in unabated debt. If you recall, just last December, when we went through our property tax levy, we talk about the amount of the tax levy, which was just around $10 million, and the amount of abatements that were over $12 million. So this last December, we retired $22 million, or rather, we paid $22 million of principal and interest. Of that, $10 million was taken out of the tax levy, and $12 million was taken out of other sources. So what we're projecting in this case is to say, we're going to make a similar payment of $10 million or more, and it'll come up on the next slide. Of that, 7.3 million is going to be principal. So with a capital improvements plan as presented that requires 6.2 million in new debt, we make a little bit of headway on the GEO debt that is paid from property taxes. We may make further headway in other areas from our TIFs, our water debt, the IEPA loans. If you recall, the sewer debt is set to really take a drop in the year 2014, when we really start to pay down a lot of those. So what happens if we have no new debt ever, or at least for the eight years of this slide? You can see that with a leveled debt schedule, once we got past that balloon payment, we're going to go up a little bit just from the way the structures were set up almost 10 years ago. So we'll go up a little bit for those borrowings that were five to 10 years ago, but then we start dropping as we begin, just like any loan, a mortgage loan, we start paying a lot more principal in the later years of all of those borrowings, because that's what would happen. We'd start hitting the second 10 years of our 20-year bond issues. So you can see, we dropped down substantially, going down closer to $8 million instead of $10, $11 million on our debt service. And none of this is inflation-adjusted. This is all in current dollars. So if I put an inflationary indicator on there, it would look a little bit different. So then what happens if we are looking a little bit more realistically, because we can't presently go without any debt in our current funding formula for capital? If we were at a $6 million debt issuance annually, and by that, we are meaning that that's $6 million in general obligation debt issued for 20 years and paid for from property taxes, what happens? And if you look back and forth, the slide is just kind of, it's still got that M shape to it. It's just changed the curve. So it's still that same situation. One of the things that, at least in the very, very near future, we don't know what's going to happen three to four years out, we are still looking at fairly all-time low interest rates. So at the $6 million a year, that could change a little bit if interest rates spike based on inflation. We would hope that many other things would be going on as far as our revenues, if we get into an inflationary picture, where we might also be able to fund projects from current revenues, where we wouldn't have to borrow at higher interest rates. But that gives a lookout approximately eight years, where we're holding our own in a lot of ways at this level on the tax levy. And I'll turn it back over to Ms. Earl.
I have two slides here that is, they're a list of the Priority One projects, and then I have a narrative after that which follows, and I'll explain them in some detail. Again, if there are specific questions, I'll attempt to answer the questions for you or defer to the directors who are here as well. I do want to point out one thing between this list and the next list, which the total is $6,201,000. You can see right above the total, it says less services to the general fund, $300,000. We still need to borrow for that transfer. However, when you approve the budget in October, I'm sorry, in November, there was $300,000 included that budget for this purpose. So the $300,000 has already been approved by the council. Therefore, we didn't want to put it in the total for the Priority One projects. I'm getting into the specifics, and some of them, the city manager already touched on. The first one is Exela. Exela is the program that we use for our building permits, licensing, and inspections. It also has the ability to do property standards as well as expanding into other licensing, such as liquor licensing. And we are looking at using more of the functionality of that program. The program costs about $1 million, and the $245,000 represents the last installment of four installments that the city has in order to pay for the program in full. So you will not see an Exela software purchase amount in next year's CIP. And again, I would like to point out as well, Row 9 corresponds with the spreadsheet that you have that we sent you, if you want to look at the detail there as well. The next project is the civic center renovation for $450,000. The first two items, I know you are very aware of. The first one is that the staircase needs to be replaced. It currently is not there, and that's part of this renovation. The second one is the asbestos abatement, which has already started and will continue into next year. The third project is the fire pump system evaluation. It is having a number of failures, and it does need to be evaluated or replaced. This is a safety issue for the building, for building occupants, as well as the fact that we could have flooding in the event that it fails. There's two more items related to the civic center in this amount. The first one is the signage that has started to go up around the building, but this will expand that for kiosks and bulletin boards, as well as finish the directory of signs. And then the last item for the civic center relates to code compliance renovations for the building's electrical system, mechanical system, fire protection, as well as other items that are non-compliant with ADA.
Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mrs. Earl. Do we have an estimate about how much each of those items?
I can defer to Mr. Gaynor.
And then my other question is whether the asbestos abatement portion of that was part of the initial project to do the roof renovation and all the other work in the civic center? I thought somehow that asbestos abatement was part of that. Thank you.
Mayor, members of council, City Manager Doug Gaynor, Director of Parks, Forestry and Recreation, and in this case, also Facility Management. The abatement program was started. It went from the ADA doors at the south end around to the doors where the stairs have been removed and was stopped due to a number of issues we had with the contractor and the consultant working with the contractor. We then used some of those funds to do the additional abatement for the carpet tile abatement project. So what we have left, as far as the abatement is concerned in the lower level, is from the center doors down to the north end of the lower level. It's a short run. And the second question is, no, we do not have cost estimates for any of those four specific projects at this point. These are estimates that we kind of have just looked at.
The next project is the Brummel Richmond Tot Lot renovations. The project was originally funded, and a portion of it was on the carryover, and the construction will be next spring. However, there are some additional funds needed related to state environmental testing and possible enhanced soil disposal requirements. And just in the event that you're not aware, ASTM stands for the American Society for Testing and Materials, and the Consumer Product Safety Commission is the other acronym. Crown Center improvements, we're calling this item minor projects. There are some corresponding dollar amounts here. The first item is the protective rubber flooring tile and carpet tile replacement. This has to do with the floor tiles, both carpet and rubber tiles. They are significantly worn. They are creating trip hazards, and they're damaging skate blades. The replacement of the sinks in the community center restrooms, this has to do with the fact that they're rotting. The backsplashes are rotting, as well as the counter. The laminate is delaminating from the surface. They will be replaced, and the counters will be removed. The ice rink compressor motor also needs to be repaired. A crack has developed, and the motor is over 20 years old, so it needs to be addressed. The next item relates to Nois. As the city manager said, there are two projects that relate to Nois. One is a masonry wall, which I'll get to a little bit later. The roof itself, this project will consist of tuck pointing and brick replacement on the main chimney, along with replacement of the main roof asphalt shingle system. The next item is the library chiller replacement. And as you recall, you approved funds in the current year's budget for the design. This is for the replacement of the chiller itself. It was originally installed in 1994. It will make the facility more energy efficient, and they are projecting a 12% to 15% savings in energy for cooling. The next project is also a library project relating to the doors. Seven of the 10 doors, both interior and exterior doors, need to be repaired. This project will have someone come in, remove, repair, and reinstall the doors. The next two projects are for the fire station. For both of these projects, the funds requested are for engineering, and it is anticipated that construction funds will be requested next year and the spring, the construction will occur in 2012. The first project is a mechanical upgrade. It is, the existing mechanical system was installed in 1999, and it was a residential grade at that time. The upgrade will make the The upgrade will make the building more energy efficient. It's anticipated a 15% savings in heating and a 40% savings in cooling. And again, the requested funds are for engineering. The next item at Station Two has to do with the boiler and chimney and apparatus floor heating replacement. Again, this has to do with energy efficiency. It's anticipated that there'll be a 15% savings in heating costs. The chimney was lined in 1998, and it is cracked in half. It needs to be repaired. Again, the funds here are for engineering as well. The next item is the Service Center parking deck repairs, and the parking deck is leaking. It's leaking above the mechanical equipment and the piping below. The funds that are requested for this item, again, are for design engineering, and the construction is anticipated for the following year. The Crown Center electrical panels are in very poor shape. They cannot maintain tight wire connections at this time. In addition, the main controller, the main controller is one of the panels that is no longer functional, and it does need to be replaced. The funding that is requested is for two panels. An additional funding request will come forward for the additional panels next year, and the remaining panels total two additional panels that they will need funding for next year. The next item is the Ecology Center greenhouse. The city manager already spoke about the greenhouse. It is in very poor shape. It does not meet building or ADA code. Their water has infiltrated the greenhouse. The extreme temperatures are impacting plants and animals that are currently in the greenhouse. And as the city manager indicated, we have applied for a grant to IDN hour for this repair. However, the funds are being requested here. Also at the Ecology Center are HVAC improvements. It will replace two of three existing HVAC systems in the building. The work will be completed by our in-house staff, and it is anticipated that it will make the building more energy efficient. It's estimated an 18% energy savings in natural gas and a 60% reduction in electrical consumption for air conditioning. The next two items relate to James Park. The first one is the irrigation system improvements. The booster pump and operation controller at the facility need to be improved. The turf is poor, and the playing conditions are, could be improved at the facility. Because of the irrigation system, the maintenance costs are higher than they would be if it was an improved area. In addition to that, we do have trip hazard liabilities for the city. The project will consist of an upgraded pumping system, new controllers, cabinets, and an electrical system in order to supply adequate water pressure. The next item also at James Park will go to address trip hazards as well. It has to do with the park settlement, and the pavement needs to be fixed. The project will regrade and replace the settled pavement in sections at James Park. The next item is the Fog House signal renovations, and the project includes roofing, the exterior envelope, HVAC, security, and ADA compliance. The facility has had water infiltration and vandalism, and the roofs, gutters, and downspouts of both of the buildings are severely deteriorated. They also are historic structures. The next project is the masonry wall at Noise. Again, it's in disrepair. It's on the south side of the building where the access to the basement level studio is. The stones have detached, the walls are cracking, and the water is infiltrating through the brick, which is increasing the rate of deterioration.
Alderman Burris, do you have a question?
Yeah, actually, it goes back to the Signal House. Is it, I know at one point it was being rented. Is it currently being rented?
Different building.
Different building, never mind. Can you talk to me about what's, but come back, come up. I always like seeing you. Can we talk about what's happening in that building? Nothing, anything, who uses it?
Are we speaking of the Fog Houses?
Yes.
Yeah, they're used for ecology programs throughout the year, especially spring, summer, and fall for the camp programs.
Do you know how many campers would actually use that?
Over the course of the three seasons, I'd have to estimate several hundred would be the...
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Gaynor, would the Fog Houses still be usable for this current camp season if we did nothing to shore them up?
Right now, we would have to flip a coin. We're not sure. We think we would probably close it down, but we would want to take a look at a closer review structurally, as it indicates there's a lot of wood deterioration. So we would want to make sure structurally it was sound. It does leak quite a bit, so during inclement weather, there's issues. If we don't use the facilities, if we were not to use them this year, we would try to relocate, relocate those camps in some of the elementary schools.
So the Fog Houses, Signal Houses could be buttoned up and left intact, and it would just be the displacement of the camps?
That's correct.
That would be the big repercussion?
Yeah, I mean, the deterioration would continue, yes, but we could, we could close it down and look at it again next year as to what we need to do.
Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Gaynor, the Lighthouse Park District is a separate taxing body, and can you tell me what, what they pay for out of the taxes that they raise? Is it not maintenance of the building and the adjacent buildings?
Primarily, they pay for the lighthouse and the building that's attached to the lighthouse as far as repair, maintenance, and for the personnel for that purpose. They do not pay for the Fog Houses.
Fog houses are part of the historic, the historic structures on that site, isn't that correct?
Yes.
I think we should ask them if they are willing to take on a little bit more responsibility for the Fog Houses.
We have, but we could try again. Alderman, when?
Doug, is it, what, what, have you looked at what the cost, I mean, since this is, these are landmark structures, what would it cost to mothball them? Do you know what I mean by mothballing?
I believe so. You're saying to button them up so we don't...
Okay. Mothballing is a Navy term for what you do with a ship when you take it out of service, but you're not, you're not decommissioning it. You just save it. You know, you take everything out that's working, you keep it watertight.
Right.
So...
I don't have an estimate for that. That's something we could come back with. Should that be your desire?
What, what are our obligations under the fact that it's landmarked, that these buildings are landmarked?
Well, we've looked, we've been looking at the, I think, the 1930s agreement with the national, with the federal government when it was given to the city, and we're looking at an agreement that was reached with the Lighthouse Park District to see what our specific obligations are. The first look at it does not give any indication that there's an obligation that we need to keep them in repair, but we need to look at that closer.
This is actually a broader question, not just to you, but I think to other staff. When we're looking at the Fog Houses, we're looking at the Ecology Center, we're looking at Noise, it would be nice to have a, I guess, an assessment of compatible uses in these various buildings. We have campers at all different places, we have activities at different places, but really, could we consolidate and have less facilities in, and then put them into more buildings? And I don't think that we really, we kind of talk about it on the surface, but we really haven't done a study of what is happening in each of the buildings and where are there compatible uses that we don't necessarily have to have these, all these buildings trying to maintain them. Obviously, we do want buildings throughout the city, so we're not, you know, having them in one particular area or another. But this just seems, you know, you start looking at this list of, you have all these structures deteriorating, and we want to keep them for this particular camp or this project, but can't we pull people together? So I guess I'm asking for a look at what are we doing in all these areas, and where can we consolidate, commensurate scale? Thank you.
The idea of using a school is particularly appropriate because Orington School is within walking distance of Lighthouse Beach, and it would be too bad not to have campers have access to Lighthouse Beach. So I would suggest, Alderman Burris, that you might want to add in public structures such as schools that you can, can rent. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Briefly back to the Fog and Signal Houses at the Lighthouse. Have we, do you get the sense that we've exhausted the opportunity to find other funding sources? Have we looked everywhere we can? I know we've applied several years in a row for...
Yes, we did apply for American Heritage Grant through the National Park Service, I think, four years in a row, and were turned down. We've been working, obviously, with the Lighthouse Park District folks to try to find other grants that were available and have not been successful.
Specific to the Fog and Signal Houses?
That's correct.
I know the Lighthouse itself has benefited from some significant grant money over the years.
Alderman Holmes?
Just so I want to piggyback on what Alderman Fisk had said in terms of the Lighthouse District, and I guess it would go also with Mr. Gaynor, what Mr. Gaynor said in terms of looking at what our obligations really are. I think that we need to pursue that, to find out if we are really obligated to, or does this belong to the Lighthouse District in terms of the maintenance and carry on that? So I would really like to know that.
I believe, having been Alderman of the ward for seven years and gone to a lot of meetings on this, that the Fog Houses are ours, and that we, we are welcome to ask the Lighthouse taxing district if they would be interested in taking them over, but having studied the map, they're...
Well, but Mr. Gaynor, didn't he say, though, that you're looking at the, the only agreement is back, what, in 30, in the 30s? Is that what you said, or did I misunderstand you?
To my knowledge, there are two agreements. One was when the land with the Lighthouse property was conveyed to the city from the federal government, and then about three years ago, maybe, four years ago, there was an agreement reached, which was a re-agreement with the Lighthouse Park District on, with the city. The city owns that property and leases it to the Lighthouse Park District, and that lease was renewed about three or four years ago, I believe. The mayor was involved when she was an alderperson.
Okay, so that's what you're referring to?
Yeah.
Oh, that agreement, okay. All right.
Alderman Fisk?
Thank you. So Doug, the lease specifically with the Lighthouse Park District says that their responsibility is going to be for the Lighthouse and the residents attached to the Lighthouse. Is that, and that's it?
I believe pretty much. They have also that park where the park shelter is.
Right.
We, we maintain the park shelter, and we reserve that shelter, and we receive revenue for when it is rented out, even though it's on their land. That was part of an agreement that we reached with them. But for the most part, it's the Lighthouse and the building that's attached to the Lighthouse, and that's where also the director of the Park District resides, which is their primary area of responsibility and what they're using their funds for.
Right. I'm one of the people who pay taxes into that Park District, so I'm happy to pay a little bit more to at least maintain the site. But I want to remind the council that this is a national historic landmark. This is something that if we pay a little bit more attention to, we can assist in attracting more tourists, more tourism to the city of Evanston. I think Francis Willard House is another good example of the possibility of enhancing our revenues by maintaining the Lighthouse and helping, helping the Park District to maintain the Lighthouse, but also working with them to try to maintain the entire campus site. I think there's a, a revenue enhancement opportunity here that we, I don't think this council has talked about. I'm not sure about previous councils.
Alderman Burris?
Hi. Got some questions from Alderman Rainey. When was the James Park irrigation system installed? Okay.
Further back. I'm getting, I'm getting signals from the late night. The irrigation system was, yeah, well, we'll have to get her that information because I think that we redid it when, when we redid the ball fields, so...
And, so I'm going to ask a few other questions. Was this an engineered project, and were the recommendations that you're discussing today discussed at the time of the irrigation installation? And is what we're talking about, the 80,000, is it an addition, repair, or an entirely new system?
The 80,000 is for a new pump in order to provide additional volume for the ball fields and the sacchar fields.
And then, can I actually have a follow-up question?
Go ahead.
Sorry. It's actually to Marty. I wanted to clarify, the 20 million from the garage, were you insinuating that we paid that off?
No.
Could you, okay, that, because I think that that's how it came off, and after I was like looking this more and then received my text from God, I think that we just need to sort of be more clear about that. Thank you.
Presently, the, I'm actually following up on a public request. The library, the library, the parking garage debt is still just over $30 million, and it will be paid down from the Washington National Tiff District. The debt service is set up such that we have enough to pay the debt down and coverage for some additional projects, assuming that our assessed value remains stable or goes up with new development. So we do have, so there is no need for other funding sources for any parking facilities to pay off their debt presently. The Washington National Tiff and the Parking Fund can handle that. There is no need for general revenue sources.
Okay, but I guess the clarification then is that when Joe Allen was saying that the 20 million's off of our debt, and we've now reduced our percentage, it's really a shell game of moving the debt, not necessarily that the debt has gone away.
No, not at all. That is debt that has been paid down. So we had much more than $30 million before we made those balloon payments. So we've paid off the Maple Deck, and now we're paying off Sherman.
Okay, so the, of the, from, going from 6% to 5%, that debt has really seriously been paid down. It's not just been moved elsewhere?
Correct.
All of it?
I can't say all of it, so when you say...
Okay, the 20, but the 20 million?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
City manager, did you have questions from Alderman Rainey also?
The same question.
The same questions. All right. Thank you very much, Joe Allen. Would you go on?
Okay, the next project is the building automation system at the Service Center. For a portion of it, the parts are obsolete and difficult to procure. The existing system is original to the building. Phase one of this project has been completed in 2006. This project is for phase two, and it includes the controls for the remaining building HVAC functions, which contain all heating, air conditioning, air handler, exhaust fan, and control functions for four buildings. The next item is the fleet service makeup air unit. The unit was installed pre-1990, and it is required by law. By law, the city is required to supply a predetermined amount of ventilation to this space. Failure to provide ventilation may result in EPA fines. Also, we could experience a carbon monoxide issue in the event that there is a lack of ventilation. The next item is a locker room at the Service Center. The figure there of 125,000 should be reduced to 37,500 for the design. Originally, there were about $400,000 in requests for renovations to the Service Center. The 125,000 represented... The one hundred and twenty-five thousand represented a design for all of the renovations. And then upon further discussion, we realized that we need thirty-seven thousand five hundred, which represents about fifteen percent of the project cost. And essentially, what the project is, is the locker room at the Service Center is not enclosed and it needs to be upgraded. The next item, I'm moving into Public Works projects now, has to do with the traffic signal upgrades on Sheridan Road. We did receive construction funding from the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for planning in the amount of six hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. The project was approved by the City Council in May of 2010, and the requested funds are required to pay the city's portion of the design engineering and construction engineering costs. The Department of Transportation authorized the work on the design contracts to begin in December. The next item is the Chicago Avenue Signals. The work was completed in November of 2010. The funding requested here is to reimburse IDOT for the construction engineering and construction costs associated with the project. Chicago Avenue Streetscape, again, is a reimbursement to IDOT for two hundred and fifty thousand. The construction funding originally approved from IDOT in 2009 was a little over eight hundred thousand dollars, and this funding is for the city's portion of the construction costs associated with the project. And the city did receive IDOT design approval to begin work on the design contracts in The next item is a pedestrian safety improvement project on Emerson and Green Bay Road. The one hundred thousand dollar is the city's portion to reimburse IDOT for the construction costs associated with the project. The next item is a federally mandated requirement for sign inventory. A City Works is a program that we use for our work order system. We are going to outsource this project. It's going to cost about a hundred thousand dollars. And again, we are mandated by the federal government to have a signed inventory and maintenance plan completed by January of 2012. The city's IT staff has been working with Public Works, and the vendor will work with our staff in order to complete the inventory.
I think we should write a letter to our Congresswoman and let her know that this unfunded mandate exists. I'm not sure that that is our highest priority or the way we would choose to spend our money if we weren't required to. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think this is one that I would love to have more information about. I'm not sure I understand it. Maybe I need to talk to our federal representatives to understand it, but can, do we have a better idea of what it means to inventory our signs using G-P-S technology?
Suzette Robinson's here.
Are we counting signs? Are we assessing signs? Are we making sure we have them in all the right places?
Well, actually, it's all of that that you described, in addition to, the signs have to have a certain level of, or type of reflectivity. And so we have to date the signs that we put in based on when we purchased them and when we replaced them, to make sure that they meet the standards, and we have to track all that information. And right now, we do that with most of our signs already, by placing the information on the back of the sign, but we need to have all of that data in a database. So this is something that all municipalities, I mean, we're trying to put a project together with several other municipalities to meet this requirement. So other cities are struggling to try to meet the deadline.
So can we realize some economies of scale on this project by collaborating with some of our neighbors and doing this inventory?
Yes, we're working with, we're working with Glenview and several other communities to try to put a contract together to get this done.
I only have a few more. The next item is Sheridan Road resurfacing, and the project began in August. It is anticipated to be completed in July. And again, this is a reimbursement to IDOT for the city's portion of construction engineering and construction costs associated with the project. The last two items, the first one is a reimbursement to the Village of Wilmette. This is the Sheridan Isabella Project. It was completed in October of 2009, and this is the city's portion of the construction costs. And then the last item is the CIP Street resurfacing for our water main projects. These are the roadway resurfacing construction costs associated with the streets listed on the slide. As the city manager said, we also have Priority Two projects. We are not recommending funding for the Priority Two projects listed on this slide and the next one for the FY 11 fiscal year. As you can see there, I did highlight the Salt Dome for you, just to remind you that it is a project. We know it's very important. However, it would be unlikely that construction could happen in 2011, and therefore it is listed for 2012. And there's the other street resurfacing projects that we, that do need to occur. And again, all the Priority Twos are there at the Priority Two level primarily because of funding. We know they need to occur, but we're recommending that we hold off for one year on these projects.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. When you talk about the energy cost savings in percentages, for instance, with the library required, I don't know, whatever it is, the upgrade there, the replacement there, or the, you know, the several others in the Ecology Center and places, do, it doesn't really give a sense of how much money that actually is savings, in savings? Is it possible to find out what, what the, I guess, the bills are, and then we'd have a better analysis of whether it was worth to, or how much-
Sure.
-it would take to pay back, and, you know, how much it's actually going to save us in dollars?
We can get that information.
Before I turn it back over to the city manager, I just wanted to let you know that Lou Gurgitz and Brandon Dieter put a lot of this information together for you. We've had a lot of discussions with the department heads. They've all been really, really helpful in getting the CIP done this year. We've spent a lot of time on it, and I, every time I'm up at the podium, I'm always remiss after I sit down and I don't publicly recognize those two gentlemen, and Jordan Binder, for all of the work that they do in putting this information together for you.
Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a couple of questions. One is where the requests for the capital projects come from? Which department, the Service Center renovations, for example, are those Public Works or are those facilities projects?
Primarily, they're facilities, although Public Works does have some of the projects. On the spreadsheets that you have in here-
Right.
-it indicates the department that's submitting the request. Most of the facility projects are coming from Parks, Recreation, and Community Services.
And by my reckoning, about a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars in the Priority One projects are for design and engineering. And I think, how did we classify the Service Center locker room renovations? What was that amount?
That was thirty-seven thousand five hundred.
Thirty-seven thousand five hundred. So it's about a hundred and twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars then for engineering and design. And as we perform triage on our capital improvement program, I wonder if this is a rational application of those funds? How does it work with spending money on design and engineering this year? Does it guarantee, then, a project in 2012? Is it money that we need to spend in 2011?
The request that came forward from the directors would anticipate a subsequent request for funding for construction. Last year, when we talked about the library chiller, there was a discussion that the design would occur, and if it was necessary to hold, you could, but the design would be completed. I would have to defer to the directors to talk about their specific projects and whether or not they could be held, but you did have that discussion before the library chiller project was completed. So I, again, I would have to defer on the specifics. I know there were some in the Fire Department, there's the locker room, and there's a few more that is just for design.
The ones that I could find in the Priority One projects were the twenty thousand for both Station One, Station Two, fifty thousand for the Service Center parking deck, and then the thirty-seven thousand five hundred for the locker room renovations. Those were the only engineering design projects that I could find among those.
We can-
I don't know if I'm right, but-
We can get more information for you on that as well.
And Alderman Grover, members of the council, just to maybe take even a bigger step back, I think that what I've heard from talking to individual members of the council is a concern that in past years, the approval of any kind of preliminary work, all of a sudden, then green-lighted a project throughout, regardless of how much it cost. And I think I've heard from many of you to say you're not comfortable moving forward in the future with that way. So what we're trying to do is we're trying to identify what are the greatest needs, and once we've done that and you agree, if that first step for that project is architecture and engineering work, then that would be funded. That does not guarantee that that project's going to move forward. We hope, you know, through the natural course of things, if money is available, the priorities don't change wildly, but sometimes they do. But bottom line is just because you authorize architecture and engineering does not mean you have authorized then whatever the total dollar amount of the subsequent project is. We will continue to bring back the pieces for you so that the council can make decisions on a year-to-year basis based on fund availability and other priorities.
I guess what I'm needing is reassurance that investing in design and engineering at this point is smart project planning. It's the, it's not the ounce of prevention preventing the pound of cure when it comes to long-term maintenance of specific buildings, is it?
We have scrubbed through this-
Or is this part of our ounce of prevention?
We have scrubbed through this list the best that we can, and so that handful of projects that you have identified is our best recommendation to you that that's the case. That's not to say that a circumstance will change, our ability to get debt, and Mr. Lyons didn't really touch on this, but if the council would like to talk about this, we have been able to go to the debt markets rather freely over the last several years and basically set the dollar amount we want to set and able to issue debt. We are not convinced that that will continue to be the case. The state of Illinois is teetering. Other municipal governments, other state governments are teetering, and it may come to a time where we are not able to debt finance a level that even you, as a city council, feel comfortable with, with tax revenues to take care of it. The markets may say, no, thank you. And that has not happened yet, but again, Mr. Lyons is standing at the podium, we are beginning to see indicators that the market may say, no, thank you. We do not wish to buy the debt of the city of Evanston regardless of the, of what we may tell the markets as being a funding mechanism to the property tax. Is that a fair-
I think that's an excellent summary. By coincidence, Moody's called me today, and I had a discussion with them, actually about a question I asked, you know, this is not quite the service turnaround I would have expected, the question I asked about eight months ago, which was, how did we go for, you know, besides our, I think, our good work, we went from double A1 from Moody's to triple A, and we talked a little bit about that, but at the same time, Moody's and all, Fitch, Standard and Poor's, they have been a part of the news, they have been a part of the issue. So the last ratings review that I went through was very detailed. It was more detailed than any that I've gone through before, where the analysts sitting at the table opened up our books and went through a lot of stuff. I was there for two hours at the last one with Moody's with detailed questions. So what you do tonight matters, or in our capital plan, matters to them. And it was just, one thing we hadn't talked about was a debt policy that we have brought up to the council during the budget process, that we should move forward in the next couple of months as far as adopting said debt policy, so that we show we have a good policy, we're on a path to modest reductions in our program, but not an abandonment of the market. If you end up disappearing from the market, that also sends off alarms. If we just go away, then they, I can think of communities that didn't issue and got rerated because of the Moody's doing their own due diligence, went out and looked at their financial statements and said, what's going on? So I think we're on a very good course here with the long-term look of moderation, if you will.
Thank you, Alderman Burris. You got your answer. Alderman Fisk?
Gosh, Marty and city manager, thank you very much. I'm just, I'm very impressed with, again, your approach in moderation and leading us through what's been two years of incredibly complex and serious project. And I don't know whether the public out there adequately appreciates the amount of energy and time that you've put into this, but also your advice to us as council members has been, at least to me, invaluable. So thank you. That's not why I turned my light on, though. That was a response to what you just said. I'm really impressed with that. My question is for the city manager, and that is with regard to the two expenses, the chiller project and the library door project. Has there been any thought given to what happens if the library model, funding model, kicks in, and who would then be responsible for that?
Certainly, Alderman Fisk, members of the council, we have discussed that internally. I think the council has not set a policy yet on any capital costs associated with the library, what the city would take on, what you would look for a separate library fund to take on. At this point, we believe those two capital projects need to be dealt with regardless of how the debt is repaid. My sense is we'll sort that out as time progresses, but we felt that those were important and we didn't want the uncertainty of the library fund issue to delay attention to those projects.
Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Bobquid, you referred earlier to the animal shelter renovation project. It falls on our list of the carryover projects for eighty-five thousand dollars. Given what you've suggested is some uncertainties as to the use of the adjacent properties around the animal shelters, is there any way that we can hold off on that expenditure for this capital improvement plan?
Alderman Grover, members of the council, we plan to come back to you, I believe, Mr. Lyons and Mrs. Earl, that the, we plan on the 24th, Mr., thank you, Mr. Garen, the 24th, plan to have, put on your agenda a discussion about all those various properties. So certainly, we would not come back to you with capital, depending on the additional discussion this evening, we would come back in, that's the next meeting, so if you wish to make some adjustments there. We left the carryover money as is for the animal shelter because the council has not made a change in policy direction, but as the council has examined, I think, informally, you know, some of those properties, the recycling center, the animal shelter, the private development that may or may not be moving forward at 2424 Oakton, we wanted to at least leave the money in for now, but absolutely, the council could delay any expenditure while there's discussion about potential changes.
I think it raises a question for me, and maybe I missed this. When are you looking for a decision from the council on this proposed program?
Well, and that kind of takes us to the last slide, if I may, Alderman Grover, members of the council. You have previously approved the twenty point six million dollars of capital projects. We're recommending that you continue with three point four million dollars in carryover projects that has already been funded. That leaves the balance of the general, the Priority One general obligation debt projects at six point two million dollars. I believe that number could be less. And based on your input this evening, you've already asked, there's a council series of questions, that my sense is that perhaps if we wait until the February 14th meeting, we could have a more, a complete set of answers. I'm looking at staff. Is that okay or not okay? Okay or not okay?
Just one point as far as debt issuance timing. We did have a sewer debt issuance that we committed to in the fall, so that would be moving forward. If you recall, that was in place of a sewer rate increase. So that was a four million dollar issuance that we have scheduled for a February council meeting. So in order to manage our debt issuance costs, if it possible, we would go forward at that point in time with any of the twenty million dollars that is to be paid for through debt issuance, and we could come back at the next meeting and identify that specifically, because the three point four million- million is funds that we already have. There is no debt issuance associated with that, so that's the only-
So we could come back on the 14th versus the 24th of January?
Yes.
Okay. So again, my hope is if there's additional conversation tonight to give some direction, I think I've heard some, you know, there's been questions about the Fog House, there have been questions about a couple of other projects. Would certainly appreciate getting feedback from the council as to what you've heard, where we stand with debt. Is the $6.2 million number a comfortable number? If it's an uncomfortable number, what is the order of magnitude that it's uncomfortable for you? For me, quite honestly, I'd like to try to get a little closer to five. Again, there's probably, I couldn't give you a specific rationale other than, you know, if we go to five, that's about half of what we've been doing over, what, the last five years, Mr. Lyons, on a more or less average?
It's certainly half of what our debt service levy is, so, and it also would be a $2 million differential instead of a $1 million differential on the principal being retired. So we would be, our rate of retirement at least would be substantially improved.
So if the council is agreeable that you think that perhaps a million dollars could come off that number, I think we'd like to try to do that, come back and answer questions, and, you know, take whatever additional direction you have for us this evening, and then wrap this all up. Is the 24th realistic? My sense is with the number of questions we've gotten, it would be more comfortable to wait till the 14th. Is that correct, Mr. Gainer's nodding yes, Mrs. Earl's saying okay? So we would then shoot to come back to you on the 14th of February with a number that's closer to five versus six.
Does that work for everyone?
We appreciate the council's time this evening, appreciate Mrs. Earl and her staff, real excellent job grappling with this, and certainly the department directors. Any good department director would want to give you at least $10 million more worth of, with projects citywide. And so we worked very hard to clear the brush of the projects, and I appreciate especially Parks Recreation Community Services, Public Works, they have the lion's share of these projects. They want to be good stewards of the infrastructure that they're entrusted to, and I appreciate all of their hard work in being as realistic as possible with this process. So we'll come back to you on February 14th, and then we would be asking for final action then to approve the general obligation debt amount for fiscal 11. And that concludes, then, Madam Mayor, the Special Order of Business.
Thank you very much. Next is citizen comment, and the first speaker is Janad Rizki.
Actually, I prepared a speech, but I'm going to probably drop it for now and talk about this capital plan. First thing tonight that I didn't really see, we didn't discuss anything going on at the water department, and I'm, my issue with that, of course, is we just had a 10% water increase, and really, there's going to be a 30% increase coming after that. The council didn't approve it, but basically by approving the 10% increase with little discussion, my guess it'll approve the 30% increase. And I think, listening to some of these projects tonight, many of these things, some things appear to be mistakes, of course, and that could, that could be understood. Some of these things really aren't capital, but really repairs of expense. In the real world, the business world, they'd be expensed, but that's not the issue with the city, but many of these things are trivial in my mind, they're just replacements and fixes that really aren't really major capital planning. But there's a lot of questions here that I see in these presentations, like the staff says seriousness of some of this stuff, and I really don't, under some of this, and sometimes having looked at some of these things in the past, it didn't make any sense. Just listening about the asbestos in this building is a good example. I mean, how much asbestos is in the building and how much needs to be really abated or fixed, nobody seemed to talk about or understood, other than, it seemed really very vague. And really, if, you know, there should have been a study done, study should have told you what you really needed to abate and not abate, and then really what is your number to fix, and nobody really came up, said anything about that. So maybe it's there, maybe it's not there. And also, really, the amount of debt the city has is a function of the ability of the city to pay. So, I mean, I'm not, I'm unclear on that. I want to say two other things tonight about some things I asked for recently. I asked the city to give me information on the number of workman comp claims by departments. City felt this was to burden them some. The issue that I really want these for is because the city, basically, if these departments, workers are getting hurt or there's a lot of issues in these departments, then there really is issues of how you're running your departments and the safety of the workers. And I did ask for something else, and I realized it was not so much data, and the city doesn't necessarily have to give it to me. I asked, I observed recently, one of the recycling workers basically right on the back of the trucks, on the sides, and I asked really how safe this is for these workers to be standing on a little platform about this wide when their boots are wet and they're basically standing, these trucks are moving, are one of these people going to fall off? And obviously, the city said, "It's not my concern in a sense, because we don't have to respond." So I asked the council to look into this and explain to me why this is safe, that someone should be on the back of a truck like that, hanging off the truck. And, you know, basically, if the city can't operate some of these things safely, the city shouldn't operate some of these programs if people are going to get hurt. So that's my comments for the evening.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I may just respond to one issue that Mr. Rizki mentioned, and that was the asbestos removal. As the council recalls, we've kept, we've kept you apprised certainly since my arrival here, so that was the summer/fall of 2009, of two particular areas that were identified that, one was the flooring in this portion of the building. For those who may not be aware, there are two pieces of this building. There's the original, it's a 1908, 1909 side of the building which we're currently occupying, and then another portion of the building, which is what, 1920, 1924? So this side of the building with the tile, so we are in the final stages of abating of that with the placement of the carpeting, and then on the lower level, there is additional asbestos abatement regarding, in the ceiling area, and that project is ongoing. So the council has been made aware of that over the course of the last almost two years, and we are in the final stages of that.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Vasilko. Go right ahead. Please give your address as well.
Mike Vasilko, 2728 Reese Avenue, Evanston. Since last week, there have been numerous newspaper articles and news reports about government leadership in Springfield, planning their last-minute push to gut Illinois taxpayers before the so-called lame duck session ends, which I believe is tomorrow. This is the type of shameful, I think, archaic medieval politics that you'd expect to find among warlords in a third-world country. We call our third world Illinois, where in Springfield, they still practice the centuries-old art of bloodletting, draining a victim's veins while whispering quietly to them, "This is going to make you feel better." Last I heard, Quinn, Madigan, and Colleton decided the plan would be to raise income taxes, personal income taxes, 75%, and raise corporate income taxes 50% along with other fees and sales taxes. Mind you, not one mention of budget cuts. I left a few copies of several articles at the table near the door, and a list of contact information for local state representatives and the state senator. Please call or write or email them and express your displeasure. One article simply tells us that the national poverty level is nearly 16%, roughly 48 million people. Another article explains that the type of new, the news of the drop in the unemployment rate is not because there are fewer unemployed people, rather because the people that were unemployed have stopped looking for work. But the one brief paragraph I would like to read from verbatim from the Sunday Tribune editorial page was titled "A Tax Outrage." And I just, this just took me by, took me right to the point of the whole discussion. It goes on to say that "The tax increase plan prepared in cooperation with the administration of Illinois Governor Pat Quinn would raise individual property, individual tax rates by 75% and corporate income tax rates by 49%, giving the state the highest corporate tax rate in the country and the highest combined national and local corporate income tax rate," this is the best part, "in the industrialized world." So here we are, the state of Illinois, with such a proud thing to claim to our credit. Surely, I would hope you would agree, there's something terribly wrong with this picture, and I do beg to differ with the mayor that increasingly higher taxes, in my opinion, is not the answer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think my point was that if they cut what money comes to the city, then we would have to make it up somehow, which would probably be the property tax. Assessor Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and Alderman trustees, and city clerk and city manager. I'm here, I'm Bonnie Wilson, Evanston Township Assessor. I'm here to announce that today the Cook County Board of Review has announced dates for filing assessments, appeal complaints for property owners in Evanston Township. The filing dates for property assessment appeals will begin on Tuesday, January 11th, which is tomorrow, and will end on Thursday, February 10th. Property owners may appeal their assessments to the board if they believe that their assessment is too high. A lawyer is not required to file an appeal on behalf of a residential property owner. The Evanston Township Assessor's Office and the Cook County Commissioner Larry Sufferton's office will continue to process appeals for Evanston taxpayers. You can call the Office of Cook County Commissioner Larry Sufferton at eight, office at 847-864-1209 for an appointment, and they are located at 820 Davis Street. The Evanston Township Assessor's Office will have extended hours starting tomorrow. The office hours are from 8:30 to 5:00, Monday through Friday, to February 10th. Our phone number is 847-332-2465, and we are, and the assessor's office is located at 846 Dodge, at the corner of Dodge and Main. The Evanston Township Assessor's Office will be closed on Monday, January 17th, in observance of Martin Luther King's birthday. And in order to accommodate taxpayers who cannot come to the assessor's office during the normal work week, we will be open on Saturday, January 25th, and Saturday, February 5th, between the hours of 9:00 and 1:00, by appointment only. My staff and I will help taxpayers fill out the appeal forms and help you get comps for your property. It is best to call our office first so we can have the information ready for you when you come into the office, or you can also call the Cook County Commissioner Larry Sufferton's office for an appointment. Commissioner Sufferton and I will be holding an outreach meeting with the Board of Review sometime in the next month, and we will inform the council and the taxpayers when that time will be and the date and the location. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes public comment. Alderman, when do you have the consent agenda?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The first item we have is M1, Approval of Minutes of the Special City Council Meeting of December 7, 2010. M2, Approval of Minutes of the Regular City Council Meeting of December 13, 2010. Under Administration of Public Works, we have A1, The City of Evanston Payroll Through December 19, 2010, at $2,354,670.68. We also have the City of Evanston Payroll Through January 2 of 2011, at $2,273,135.55. Item A2 is City of Evanston Bills Through January 11, 2011, at $4,026,597.12. We also have City of Evanston Credit Card Bills Through November 30, 2010, at $65,453.99. Item 3.1 is Approval of Fire Safety, Fire and Life Safety Department Vehicle Replacement Purchase. This is a request from the staff to approve the purchase of, replacement vehicle purchase in the amount of $25,447.93 from Curry Motors. The funding is provided by the Fleet Services Capital Outlay Budget for Automotive Equipment. The next item is A3.2. This is Approval of Contract Extension for Water Treatment Chemicals for Fiscal Year 2011. The staff is recommending the city council approve a 10-month contract extension to four vendors to supply four different types of water treatment chemicals, and the total of these proposals is $321,588.25. Item 3.3, this is to accept and place on file a single audit for fiscal year 2009 and 10. The staff is recommending that the city council review and place on file the single audit report for the fiscal year ending February 28, 2010. The single audit is the audit of federal grants money received and spent by the city of Evanston. City manager, may I ask if this will appear on our city website? Is that what we're saying to the community here?
It certainly can. We have the more complete comprehensive annual financial report, which this is a subset of. So if the council would like, we can certainly make this available as well.
Well, when we are saying that it's being placed on file, where is it being placed on file?
With the city clerk.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Item A3.4, National Clean Diesel Funding Assistance Program for the City of Evanston Clean Refuge/Recycling Truck and Clean Motor Grader Project. The staff is recommending authorization for the city manager to sign the application for federal assistance for the National Clean Diesel Funding Assistance Program for the City of Evanston Clean Refuge/Recycling Truck and Clean Motor Grader Project. The estimated total cost of the project is $645,000. This includes an IEP A grant funding in the amount of $161,250.
I think they want it off.
Oh, A3.4?
It was withdrawn from the agenda.
All right, thank you. A3.4 is off. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. A4, Ordinance 1011, Amending City Code Section 7-15-1 to amend the membership of the Board of Local Improvements. Under Illinois law, the membership of each Board of Local Improvements, having a, of cities having a population of $50,000, $50,000 or more, is supposed to be organized in a particular way, and this is changing our ordinance to ensure that the city code complies with the state statute and uses the current job titles for the, for the board members. That item is for introduction. Item A5, Ordinance 3-0-11, Amending Various Sections of Title 8 Mobile Food Vehicle Vendors, Chapter 26 of the City Code. The Law Department is submitting for consideration three changes to our recently enacted Mobile Food Trucks Vendor, Vehicle Vendors Ordinance. These amendments include prorating the licenses granted after July 1 of any calendar year, authorizing the city manager or his or her designate to enter food trucks at any reasonable time to ensure compliance with the city code, and indicating that vendors do not need to obtain temporary food establishment permits for private events unless the vendor changes its menu for the private event. Item A6, that item, last item is for introduction. Item A6, Ordinance 75-0-10, Amending Various Sections of Title 9 General Offenses, comma, Chapter 8 Weapons. This ordinance amends the city's current handgun ordinance to bring it into compliance with the recent U.S. Supreme Court decisions. This item was introduced at the December 13 meeting, and this is for action tonight. Item A7, Ordinance 92-0-10, this is with respect to, regarding the sale of sewer service to 2010 Hawthorne Lane. The staff is recommending that the city council authorize the city manager to sell a portion of our city sewer service to a property owner at 2010 Hawthorne Lane. This, this is the, abutting property owner is Marvin Kanter. This is- This is to correct a flooding problem at that property. This is also for action tonight. The Planning and Development Committee, uh, did not meet this evening, and so we're moving on to Human Services. Item H.1 is Approval of Township of Evanston December 2010 Monthly Bills. The township supervisor recommends that the City Council approve the Township of Evanston Bills, Payroll, and Medical Payments for the month of December 2010 in the amount of This is for action. Under other committees, we have Item O.1, Resolution two dash R.11, Reallocating Unspent 2008 and 2009 CDBG Funds Recommended by the House, this, uh, the Housing and Community Development Act Committee. Uh, this, this resolution amends the 2008 and '09 Community Development Block Grant Programs and authorizes the reallocation of $6,872.79 in unspent funds to the city's 2011 CDBG program. This is for action tonight. Item O.2, Resolution, Resolution three dash R.11, Approving the 2011 One-Year Action Plan Recommended by the Housing and Community Development Act Committee. The Housing Community Development Act Committee is requesting approval for their one-year action plan for fiscal year 2011 and the estimated fiscal year 2011, um, block grants, CDBG block grants, home investment partnerships, and emergency shelter grants totaling $2,744,311. This is for action this evening. Item number O.3, Ordinance two dash O.11, Eliminating the Board of Examiners of Stationary Engineers Boiler or Water Tenders. This is a, uh, a board that has not been active and has been unstaffed for years, and we are eliminating the board from our city ordinance. That's for introduction this evening. Item O.4, Ordinance forty-seven dash O.10, Amending Section two dash five dash one of the City Code Regarding the Duties of the Human Relations Commission. This is a Rules Committee recommendation to the City Council to modify the duties of the Human Relations Commission, requesting the commission to implement a work plan regarding its activities and eliminating the sections of the ordinance which allow the commission to conduct investigations and to convene public hearings. This item is for action tonight. Item O.5, Ordinance eighty-nine dash O.10, Amending Title II, Chapter fourteen of the City Code, to make the Energy Commission the Utilities Commission. This is another Rules Committee recommendation that the City Council change the title of the Energy Commission to-
Excuse me, Alderman Nguyen, Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Alderman Nguyen, if we could pull O.4 regarding the Human Relations Commission, I believe there's additional discussions to be had with the commission.
Okay. Item four is off the agenda, to be discussed by-
Item O.4.
O.4, is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Uh, item O.4 is off the consent, consent agenda? Okay. Okay. Uh, item O.5, this, again, this is the, um, the ordinance to change the title of the Energy Commission to the Utilities Commission and broaden its scope beyond just the electrical franchise to all forms of utilities within the city. Uh, this item is for action this evening. With that, Madam Mayor, that completes the consent agenda.
Thank you very much, Alderman Nguyen. It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, thank you. Uh, City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Jean Baptiste.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tendem.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye, thank you.
You're welcome.
A. to nothing, the consent agenda passes. Alderman Jean Baptiste, do you have a report from Administration and Public Works?
Yes, for eight, three point four. Um, I just, I request that-
Speak to the mic, please.
I recommend the city manager to sign the application for federal assistance for the National Clean Diesel Funding Assistance Program for the City of Evanston Clean Refuge Recycling Truck and Clean Motor Grader Project. So I move approval.
Second, second.
Madam Mayor, at the committee, this was removed from the agenda for consideration. It was not pulled for discussion, so it, it was removed for, from the agenda.
Oh, it was removed, okay.
Withdrawn.
Withdrawn from the agenda. Not considered by the committee.
All right. So much for you signing the application. Um, next, um, is O.4. For, um, what committee was that?
It came from the Rules Committee.
From the Rules Committee, ah. That would be me. On behalf of the Rules Committee, I move Ordinance forty-seven O., or I would ask that someone would move Ordinance forty-seven O.10 for, uh, at least for purposes of discussion. Sarah Staken?
That's taken.
All right. I, I think there was some concern that the Human Relations Commission had not been consulted.
Um, Madam Mayor, members of the councils, you'll note on page two thirty-nine of your packet, uh, this was something that was decided by the Rules Committee in May of this year. We've been remiss in coming back to you. Since then, Mr. Lyons, Ms. Mora, and I have become the staff to the Human Relations Commission. We have talked about this change, Mr. Lyons, at least on two separate occasions, if not three separate occasions, um, to convey the wishes of the council sitting as the Rules Committee. I think it is safe to say that there are one or two members of the commission that remain deeply unhappy about this change, that they wish to continue in a role that really, uh, the city has not been able to staff since the staff, the full-time staff of the commission was eliminated three years ago, four years ago, um, but there are still members there that are not happy with that. In the meantime, though, the council, sitting as the Rules Committee, directed, uh, Mr. Lyons, myself, Ms. Mora, to work with the commission to come up with a, a, a new work plan. There was a community meeting held at, what was it, the end of October, first to November?
November, mid-November.
Um, that, that came up with a work plan, and the commission is moving forward. So, uh, I, I, there is, there's absolutely been an opportunity for, uh, their input with us. Again, this, coming to you so late is more a function of, of budget preparation and other issues, uh, but those discussions were held with the commission in July, August, September timeframe of 2010.
That resolves my concerns. Alderman Grover?
What? No, nothing.
All right. It's been moved and seconded.
Well, Madam Mayor, I, we received, I, if I remember correctly, we didn't receive a memo from, um-
Ms. Feldman.
Yes, from, um, the league, um, that committed, the commission members had not been able to come back before the Rules Committee. I mean, do we need to do that, just as a courtesy to them to discuss? Or, I'm sorry?
I'm trying to understand the, the concern here. Not only have we spoken about this in the Rules Committee, we addressed this at the Human Services Committee, uh, had several meetings, and I thought that's the general direction we're going, is to shift the energy and focus of the Human Relations Commission to take on the issue of, of being more proactive and promoting the diverse, diverse cultures.
Absolutely. I don't, there's no disagreement on that. I think that the-
Are they un, we saying they're unhappy about the direction?
No, I'm not saying that at all. I'm just simply saying that we were, the question, I think, was the, that Mrs. Feldman sent, um, and I believe it was an email, I can't remember anymore.
It was an email.
An email, um, just stating that we were moving ahead before the commission had a chance to come back to the Rules Committee. I believe that was the reference, not to the Human Services, but to the Rules Committee. And I just wondered if that was a courtesy that we needed to offer them. That's my only question.
I guess my concern, Alderman Holmes, after reading Ms. Feldman's, uh, email, was that the Human Services Committee had not been informed sufficiently. Certainly, they've made no attempt to, to reach out to me at any rate with any comments on this plan.
Okay.
And, and Madam Mayor, members of the council, I believe there was communication that dates back probably a year ago, because the council, sitting as the Rules Committee, I think, dealt with this in two separate occasions. Uh, the second time was in May. Uh, I believe there was a discussion probably in March or April of last year as well, and I, I don't know if there was formal communication, um, at the committee level, but I know that there was informal interaction between some of the commissioners and some of the council members at that first discussion back in March or April, which then led to a delay in us coming back to the Rules Committee where the decision was made on May third to make the change.
When is our next Rules Committee meeting?
Next Rules Committee meeting would be on February seventh.
If, if they want to come back, I, I don't know, maybe they-
And, and, again, Mr. Lyons, Ms. Mora, and I have been working very closely with them. Um, I think we, we spent several months walking through with, again, one or two members who were very unhappy about this, um, and I think that has passed. Ms. Mora is the lead staffer. Would you say that's a fair assessment? Um, so I, I think we've resolved those issues, or at least have, have come to the conclusion that the, the council's direction is something different, and those folks who are serving on the commission understand that at this point.
I, I understand, um, I understand that point about the commission. I'm just still trying to respond to the, the response of the league in terms of who had looked at some of this, and that was where we got the, the League of Women Voters, Mrs. Feldman, Jessie, had sent us the email. So that's all I was responding to, so as not to be confused.
Well, she felt that we should invite them back to the Rules Committee before a final decision was made. Having heard nothing from any member of the Human Relations Commission with any concerns, um, and having heard the city manager's response, I, I'm less concerned about it than I was when I first got her, her email. Um, it's-
Just want to make sure that we stay civil.
It's been moved and seconded, it's an ordinance, uh, so we need a roll call vote.
We haven't, uh, approved the consent agenda yet. It was voted and seconded, but we never took a vote on it.
Yeah, you did.
I don't think so. I did? Okay, I'm lost. All right, go ahead. Oh, it's right there, I'm sorry, I wrote it here.
All right. Um, Mr. Green, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Do you want to?
On, on Ordinance forty-seven O.10, Amending Section two five one of the City Code Regarding the Duties of the Human Relations Commission.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Jean Baptiste.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tendem.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Eight, zero.
A. to nothing, the ordinance passes. That concludes the agenda, and we are on call of the wards. Alderman Burris?
Seven.
Uh, thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Happy New Year to everyone, and I guess we'll say, old lang zine to the Board of Examiners of Stationary Engineers Boiler or Water Tenders. I'm sure they were a really exciting group, um, but they're, uh, they're now long gone. I'd like to make a reference to the Human Services Committee. I very much appreciate the steps that, um, the city manager has taken on the website to increase transparency. I think that's a, it, it, it's obviously one of the thirteen goals, uh, that the City Council has set, but I think with the, um, with what has happened in Arizona over the weekend, I think it's a, even a larger concern that we in Evanston, who pride ourselves on dialogue and discussion and allowing a free flow of, uh, community participation, that we try to reach out to those people who may not feel that they're part of the process and who may not come to city council meetings or boards and commissions or committee meetings, and that we, we try to find a way to, uh, increase participation, at least increase their access to, um, the public process, and hopefully diffuse any, um, any feelings of alienation that, that people in the community might have. I'd also say that, um, occasionally I'll, I'll read blogs and comments that people have written, and, um, I think most of us try not to put too much weight on those, but there, there is a two-way street here that we all need to realize, that our public statements do have an impact on people that may not be in front of us and who we may not know, and as much as we might want to reach out to them, sometimes anonymity makes that impossible. So I'd ask people also who do subscribe to these blogs and who may post anonymously, um, if you do have a concern, do try to reach out to someone. If it's not to an elected official, try to reach out to someone who may be able to help, because I think all of us up here devote our time into trying to make the decisions that we make really relevant to your life here in Evanston. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alderman Jean Baptiste?
I too want to wish everybody Happy New Year. I was impressed when Bob Donica gave, uh, the update on what we doing on King's birthday. Uh, the city is really, uh, standing up and doing a lot of things, and hopefully, uh, we'll take our children and grandchildren to one of these activities, because it's important that the history gets passed on so that, uh, we can share the lessons. Um, you know, uh, a lot of us have been concerned about this, the number of murders that have occurred in the City of Evanston. And these murders have been primarily among younger people, um, and among young black males in the City of Evanston. Uh, we have talked about, uh, the thirteenth priority, the youth, in the city, um, that we need to pay attention to, and I know that the city manager had, uh, asked Doug Gaynor to take on that, that area of work, youth and community services. Um, I'm still not sure that we, we reaching the, the youth who are falling through the cracks, and I, I'm going to make a reference to the Human Services Committee to put this matter on the agenda for some closer discussion as to what we doing, how we doing it, what are the deliverables, uh, who do we have doing the work, um, where we, where do we see the problem areas, so that we can, um, help Director Gaynor and Saul Anderson get at this work, because we can't continue to just allow this to go on and, and just act as if it is acceptable. We've got to move on it, and we've got to make a difference. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Nguyen.
No report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
No report.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes?
Um, just wanted to, um, to let a folk know that on Saturday, the fifteenth, Alderman Jean Baptiste and I will be co-sponsoring a workshop at Fleetwood from ten to noon, um, in cooperation with Interfaith on foreclosure prevention. So if you have any residents, or if you know anyone who might need that service, please have them come to Fleetwood at ten o'clock on January fifteenth.
Thank you. Alderman Tendem?
Uh, no report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Congratulations again to Converged Communications for needing a second location, for finding and securing one in Evanston, and for understanding that there's enough room for all of you on Central Street. Both of their locations are on Central Street. One in the sixth ward, one in the seventh ward now. Uh, and I forgot to thank Jonathan Perman for his role in facilitating, uh, Converged Communications' second location in Evanston. So thank you, Jonathan, Executive Director of our Evanston Chamber of Commerce.
Um, Madam Mayor, could you give me another thirty seconds?
Alderman Jean Baptiste, go right ahead.
Another thirty seconds. Um, for those of you who have been following over the last year, Wednesday will be one anniversary since the catastrophic earthquake in Haiti. Um, three hundred people, three hundred thousand people lost their lives, one point five folks, five, one point five million folks have been living under temporary tents, uh, suffering. Um, a lot of work has been done over, representatives from over a hundred and forty nations came, went to Haiti to, to help, a lot of money- A lot of money has been spent. The problem has not, the consequences have not been addressed in a qualitative way, but the solidarity on the part of the U.S. community, the good wishes, the goodwill that has been manifested, need to continue to exist, because people need a lot of help. The Haitian Congress to Fortify Haiti is holding a vigil on Wednesday from about 6:00 to about 9:30 at 1227 Dodge Avenue, which is the office of the Haitian Congress. Just people coming together and reflecting and trying to figure out, you know, which way forward. And on Dr. King's actual birthday on January 15, at Dusable Museum, there's a citywide commemoration going on from 6:00 to 10:00. So if you have friends you want to share the information with, I can forward the flyer to you, and maybe you can take a trip and get involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, 120/2A, I move that the city convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding litigation and minutes. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in an executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are five ILCS 120/2C11 and C21.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. City Clerk?
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman John Baptiste.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye, thank you.
Welcome. Eight to zero, Madam Mayor.
Zero, the motion passes. We are going into executive session.
Hey, it's only 9:30.